The budget that you have in front of you, it was part of your revenue and expenses. This is also kind of draft number four for you. Remember, we made changes after the workshop and we adjusted. What I did is I had to increase expenses $6,700 because I forgot to put a number in for the assessor that we have annually. As a result of that, I also changed revenues to reflect the difference on the court fines. I increased court fines and also interest on our investment to offset that expense. So, the last front-budget workshop, that draft at that time showed our total revenue and expenses at $1,144,812 and the current draft that you have in front of you is $1,150,012.71. So, it's that increase of about $6,700. But revenues and our expenses are balanced without impacting our levy limit. That's the only other change. There is still a decrease over prior year's levies and again, that's in big part due to our debt refinancing and carryover funds that we need to bring in and not need to levy for.
So, we don't have anything budgeted under public health insurance, life insurance, training, dental, that's normal?
Right, yes, it is normal. All of the wages are in one account, so clerk wages, public work wages, that incorporates the health insurance and all the benefits that are tied to it.
And the dental. Yeah, adding the dental, I wanted to, we should have something there.
Yes, it's all thrown into the one category.
Shelley?
Yes.
The library items that are there, that are just like that golden rod highlight and they have zero amount in them, is that, are they being considered or are they just? Oh, it's proposed. Oh, I see it. Never mind, it's proposed. Yep, got it.
Yeah, they were golden rod because they are new accounts this year.
Okay.
And then in the 22 proposed are the numbers Bailey gave.
Yep, I see it. Thanks.
No, Mary is on line.
Yep, I'm here.
Okay, if there's nothing else, then a public hearing can close.
We have to make a motion?
I make a motion, we close the public hearing.
Second. Okay, we got a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, adjourned from public hearing. All right. Now, we'll go right into the village board meeting. It's called the village board meeting, the boarder, you want to go call?
Um, yep, we'll do the roll call. Nick Hoffman.
Here.
Dean Coyle.
Here.
Scott Patterson.
Here.
Mary Scott.
She's muted.
Here.
Derek Ramerson.
Here.
Terry Meyer.
Here.
And Tyler Munson.
Here.
Okay. Discussion action on American Legion post 313 space needs. Want to do public comment? Huh? We heard, what did I say? We had that before, okay. Public comments, seeing none.
Anything you need to bring up on a public comment?
Huh?
Anything you want to bring up?
No, I'll bring that up when it's, when it's time. Public comments. Action items, discussion action on American Legion post 313 space needs.
Yep, this is a carryover from the parks committee and I don't know if you want to take it.
Sure. So, yeah, so it's a carryover from parks. We talked about it. We got the, you should all have it in your packet, a drawing, a sketch of, I believe, for the space down here, right? That was the general idea of it. So, this is kind of, the drawing is just a general idea of what they're looking for, the legion is looking for, what they'll need as far as requirements, you know, the kitchen and bathrooms and having a vault and things of that nature. One of the things that we talked about at the parks meeting was, as far as locations, was down at Veterans Park being one of them, but also the empty lot next to the Star News. And I believe that lot ends up being in about 60 by 60, which is what this was drawn for. So, this is just kind of a rough idea of what, if we decided to use that lot for their building, what we could potentially do with it. I do have a question about community centers that I'll bring up maybe towards the end of this, I don't know if it'll be appropriate for this discussion action item. But, so, we wanted to bring it to the board to try and move it along and just, you know, get opinions and feedback and see what everyone kind of thought about it.
Are they leaning for something in particular, like that lot or?
They would really like to still have something at Veterans Park if they have. That was what was expressed at the last.
Yep, yeah, they prefer to stay at Veterans Park. So, it's kind of what we decided the board, I guess, at this point as far as like space allocation, so.
Right, and I think there's an expectation too that the village would front a lot of the financial wherewithal for this to make it happen, so.
So, what are we basing this on? We have, do we have any original paperwork saying what the deal was?
There is minutes reflecting the discussion, but nothing in a legal form stating otherwise, not even the tennis courts being ceded to the village. There's no paperwork that we can locate.
See, that's, that's trouble.
Although also, and also included.
Is our obligation just to give them back land?
Would be easy.
They either wanted land in kind for what they gave us or a monetary value for the land that they gave us.
And we've got that lot right there, right?
Now, I think, and I don't know, what, the minutes set from the past, but I think it also included something to do, because they also had a building next to where Dew Signs was, in the old barber shop.
There's no reflection of that in the minutes.
Because they gave that up to make a commercial lot, so I didn't know if it involved any of that or not, so, okay. Just the tennis courts or, oh, okay.
Was that next to the flower shop?
No, it was where Dew Signs is now, next to.
Oh, okay.
There was two buildings there, the old barber shop and then there was a legion building.
I remember, yeah, okay, yeah.
Yep.
How far have you gone? The legion building was not there. Yeah, and part of the, part of the reason they kind of want to see the village kind of front for the building is because they also want it to be a community center that the village would be able to rent out and use. So, outside of being a legion space for their meetings and holding their equipment and stuff, they would also open it up to community for, you know, whatever events that need to be held, that could be held at a community center.
Yeah, I'd be curious, that, something like that would be a long ways off.
Oh, yeah.
Where land wouldn't be, so.
Right. Yeah, and that's, you know, I brought it up to them a couple times, brought up Dennis Hill times, you know, like what can the legion outside of our post do, so the legion entity as a whole, you know, do, as a grant for building, building halls and stuff like that. So, I think that would go a long way to moving the process.
I talked with Burnham, I might as well bring this out now. This building is going to be vacant or sold. It's still in Burnham's name, McAbackers. He's loaned, he just wants his money out and be done with it. And it's loomed in January, so, this is, this is something we can look at too. I mean, when you look at that design right there and they have a, you know, this has got everything in there. And I think, I'm not, I don't want to put figures or any of that in anybody's mouth, but I think it'd be a lot less money down the road if we used urban infill idea like that and if it was possible. It'd make a great community center, right next door to the, the village office. I know it comes off the tax rolls, you know, because of nonprofits, but maybe it's something that we want to take a look at while we're taking a look at this other piece of land and see if they're open to it, because if we can score the whole thing for $210,000, I'd say we've got a pretty good cherry there, so.
They're going to pay at least double that for the building.
Right, right. So, it's just something that we can keep in the ongoing discussions and let them know that, you know, maybe we should go through it, depending on what happens, you know. I, I don't see it selling as a restaurant, but that's just me. It could.
Yeah, last I seen though, he was close to 300 and some thousand.
Yeah, but I think we need to be there.
Okay.
So, and that's them listing it. He's allowing them to go sell it.
Right.
If they can get their money, they can get their money, but if not, it's going to end up back at him in January, so.
Okay. So, one of the other things I wanted to bring up is something I saw in the newspaper the other day, so I don't, if this isn't place in time, we can definitely table it. But, I guess, you know, and maybe Mary can speak to it more, but Mary approached the library board and it gave the impression that she was offering 20,000 square feet out of the Black Earth School to move the library over there. I don't know what's going on with that, but it sounds like that's potentially going to be a community center. So, if we're, now we have two competing, competing community centers. We have the legion who wants to have a community center and then whatever happens with the school.
We can talk about that later.
Okay, okay.
What, what is the vault? Is it like a?
Armory, they have an armory.
Sure. Ten one.
Okay. It's like, what, what kind of cash?
They do 21.
You have to.
No, but, I mean, they use blanks, but they're real rifles, right?
Right. Yeah. And that was one of the questions I asked too, you know, is there going to be a lot of ammo stored there and all the blanks?
Just a little bit bigger.
But they're real guns.
But they're real guns.
Just something like a vault and, uh, running, sorry, poor taste, I guess. I guess, I, we had talked briefly or it had been brought up too about a potential wellhouse rehab in Veterans Park and building in addition, when that's being done, doing this in conjunction. I really like that idea because we don't take a currently zoned commercial property off the tax rolls.
Right.
Right? You take advantage of construction costs in bulk, right? Like, you're already doing a whatever, what do we say, a half a million dollar building renovation or something.
Like, you're laying that down for new wellhouse.
Yeah, whatever it is, you add 200,000 onto that and you have a wing for the legion and it's in the park.
That would be two thousand.
You have economic savings in bulk. It's a new, it's a new facility, so it's not something you're going to be fixing up from day one. Like, I, personally, I think that, but that might be five to seven years down the road and it doesn't meet people's timeline.
And then, and then got brought up the parks meeting and I think there was something along the lines that, that would have to be two budget items, right? It would be two, it would be two projects because the wellhouse is something that Parks is doing for the village as a whole, as a necessity, whereas the community center is not in that same level, same category, if that makes sense. So, we'd have to, so we might be able to talk to the contractor and have him say, hey, you know, treat this as two projects, but bill us as one kind of thing. I don't, I don't know if we'd get the discount that we would be hoping for, telling you not, not to say we shouldn't look at it or that it's not a possibility, but I don't know, personally, I don't know if we would get the deal we would be hoping to get out of it.
Our quickest option is to give them that lot and say, good luck. Second one is, you know, take a look at these two other ideas and I do, I do hate to take it off the tax rolls, somebody wants to come in and buy it and put a restaurant in there.
And it wouldn't be nice to have it in the Veterans Park.
Yeah.
So, my fault.
That's, that's right, I would say it.
Ultimately, that would be the same place.
Yep.
So, I, I don't think we rush into this, I think we just use.
Well, where do we want to go? Because I think we should, I don't want to see it gut shelved and not give back to Dennis. I mean, that's kind of what's happened for so many years, I just don't know where do we go with it.
Well, I think it's kind of up to them. I think we tell them the position we're in. I mean, there's no money just to go do it.
So, what do we?
So, it ain't going to happen right away anyways.
Right, so what are we expecting back from the legion else? That's my question.
I mean, could we?
If we put it back to them, what are we waiting for them to tell us?
Could we tell them, could we just present them with two options and say, one, one option that can be addressed in the immediate short term is, here's the lot of land, you have land to build on, build, or, you know, it's zoned and you can do it tomorrow or however long. Or, we can look to down the road with this addition on the wellhouse in the future. What was the timeframe when we discussed that? I forget.
It would shoot for five years.
Five to seven years?
Money is going to be always, yeah, five, seven years, you know.
So, say, you know.
Just to get it started or like the break ground?
Yeah, I mean, before we, I think financially be ready to do something like that.
I think that's a, I think that's a good goal.
And we say, which, which would you guys prefer?
Yeah.
Do you want land right now or do you want to work with us?
Right.
Start planning in two years for, you know, what a new wellhouse would be, which then three years of planning for it, I'm assuming.
But that also gives them time to, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think they're in a rush, they just would like to develop it eventually.
Yeah, and depending on what they say, I mean, obviously, we bring it back and have a discussion on writing up documentation and.
I mean, the other benefit to doing it as a wellhouse addition wing is if they're asking for us to help with money to offset construction and like kind of the land that was gifted, we could apply something there to actual construction costs, which I think they would view as beneficial as opposed to just getting land and saying, okay, now we've got to build.
I think it would be really important to put a number on the land sign first.
Yeah.
So, that we all know, okay, in today's market, there's a lot of what, some of you buy whatever to build it and stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
But that's today's market, not when it's all.
Something else to keep in mind is they're looking for the village to pay for the utilities and the land and things of that nature. That was just a request from their behalf, so that will definitely, you know, we'll have to discuss that.
I think that that turns into Pandora's Box. I think utilities are something that everybody needs to pay and, you know, we can help them out all we can, but the day to day is, you know, going to be their responsibility, I think, or should be.
There, just putting that there, that was one of their requests.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, that's going to be, well, Habitat Humanities had a scheduling conflict.
Yep. So. So, they, uh, sorry, they had a personal conflict that came up last minute and we will push that to the next, next meeting.
Motion to table that.
Motion to table that for next month.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, discussion action on 2022 budget.
You guys have seen the numbers? Go through it. Are there questions? You're already ready to move?
I think we're ready to move. I would like to say one thing on this, Mary. Are you listening?
Mary?
I can hear you, I can hear you, yes, sorry. I'm fumbling for the button.
I'm going to suggest that you sustain from voting on the budget since you're in the paper, soliciting money possibly from the library that this budget could possibly be part of. So, I'm going to leave it up to you, but I'm suggesting that since there's a possible conflict there, so.
Bailey, what do you think?
Um, not for Bailey.
I don't, but don't put Bailey in that situation.
Don't put Bailey, that's not fair to Bailey.
Yeah, if there's any chance of a conflict of interest, I think I should recuse, but I was just thinking the library director is the administrator for the library and she should be asked, so it's not putting her in her position, respecting her job.
We're voting on money.
Just showing the respect.
Shelley, I guess as far as utility budgets, have you finalized those or not yet?
We will work on those separately from that. For living purposes now.
All right. I'll make a motion, we go ahead and approve the 2022 budget for the village of Black Earth as presented.
I will second that.
Any more discussion? All right, you want to do a roll call vote?
Sure, yeah, absolutely. Tyler Munson.
Yes.
Terry Meyer. Okay, go around, we'll come back. Derek Ramerson.
Yeah.
Scott Patterson.
Yes.
Dean Coyle.
Yes.
Nick Hoffman.
Yes.
Terry Meyer.
Yes.
Mary Scott.
Recuse.
Okay, they passed.
Thank you, everybody.
Discussion action regarding village board minutes from 10-5, 2021 and budget workshop 10-12, 2021.
Bailey, for the.
So, for the minutes for the budget workshop on the 12th, item C under discussion, instead of 850, it should be 875.
Bailey, can you repeat that one more time, under what section? I'm sorry.
Yeah, no problem. Under the discussion section, C, so it's on the third page.
Right.
Item that starts with Bailey Anderson, and then where it says increase in wage for pages starting at 850, that 850 should be 875.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
It was on page four, item BV. It's just, uh, we were talking, there's a comment, Munson 160-9 BV. I can't remember what the.
You must have cited the weed ordinance.
Ah, that's, yeah.
I'll make a motion, we have passed the, passed the two minutes. The other?
The other, if we're talking about the other, uh, item one, it says it was called the order at PM, doesn't have a number for the time there.
Okay, the 12th, sorry.
On the village board meeting from October 5th, the very first called village board meeting, it just said that.
Okay, thank you.
Afternoon, come back.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, we have a motion to pass them.
Second.
Jared's second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, pass it. Discussion action on treasure and financial reports.
All right, your treasures report is through September, at this time, right now, it's the end of September, we were sitting with 4.6 million in all of our accounts. 1.82 million of that are reserved for the library's CD and of course, our electric substation that new borrowing. Another 1.35 million is in our LGIT account, that's that three months of operating revenue for the village. Moving into our revenue and expense report, those are through the month of October, those are ones that I handed out a little later because we weren't quite ready. At this point, through October, we should be at about 83% to budget. On our general fund, our revenues are sitting at 106% with expenses at 75%. The revenues are high in part due to the ARPA funds of 74,000 that are sitting in there. The other thing that we're seeing on the revenue side for general fund is that our court fines are coming up. Now that court has resumed collections out as well and are moving up, we're seeing more come in. We are waiting for benchmark pilot agreement, payment move of taxes from them to come in yet. That is about $9,700. Benchmark is going through some changes over there, so we're seeing a slightly lag in the payments right now. November on the general fund, we're also going to see the remaining shared revenues coming in, transportation aids and the AT&amp;T rental on the south tower coming in is about 32,000. Expenses on the general fund, you'll notice that our library wages are going to be over. That's in part to Carolyn leaving and that payout and that our police gas expenses are up. I'm sure we've all noticed that our gas expenses, our gas at the pump is a lot higher, so that's going to compensate so that.
OPEX fault.
Yep, over budget. On the electric side, our revenues are at 86% along with the expenses. Water revenues are sitting at 94% with expenses at 77%. And on the sewer side, our revenues are at 85% with expenses at 66%. A note to the sewer, as of right now, as of today, with all the water, we had 28 requests for water exceptions this year, which is an astronomical amount. We talked about this at the public works side thing. We have written off $2,669 in sewer charges as a result of those requests or 187,000 gallons of water off that sewer, so, just as a note. Yeah.
Do we know if that, are they like pool requests, garden requests or?
New lawn watering is a lot of them. We've had a few pools.
Well, I didn't talk for it either. So.
Yeah, we had a drier summer though as well, a lot of heat.
And a lot of new construction.
A lot of new.
Yeah, which all gets covered back.
Eleven new homes, I think, again, this year so far, so, yeah.
And I think public works is working on a rental meter rate we talked about.
Yes, that was, talked about a couple months ago throughout the summer, yeah, working on.
They can rent a meter.
We don't want to advertise that as PSC has recommended, Shelley.
That's not illegal.
It's not illegal, so yes, we can, we can offer that if somebody asks.
Yeah, I mean, we still need to come up with a good policy on that. We've had several from other locations.
Yep. As an alternate to a rental meter and making a lot of number following and things like that, my brother-in-law just moved to St. Louis and they have a pretty neat way of doing things where he doesn't even like, they, you can opt in St. Louis to not have a water meter and they just bill you like a set of, they look at like the three average months of like December, January, February or something when you're not watering a lawn and that's what they bill you every month. And you, you can request sewer.
I don't know if Wisconsin is a federal.
They would probably not.
They regulate that, they'll.
Geez, yeah.
Or regulated.
And, got to keep in mind, we have to pay for sewage as a village, so if they're using it and more than they used, then we're paying it anyway, so we're not.
Yeah, I think, I feel like that would give the opposite incentive, people would use more water than they normally would, like let the shower run a little bit longer or something.
And at some point, they still have to do an adjustment, I would think.
Yeah.
True.
Yeah, it would be hard to true up the system like that.
Yeah.
It's supposed to be St. Louis, though, as big as they are, they.
But it's, they, they did it. Apparently, St. Louis did that because they were having so many water leaks that it was too much of a problem for them to deal with reconciling lost water and water leaks and so to like, to ignore water leak loss, they were just like, ah, we're just going to charge everybody a blank. They basically were like, it costs us 10 million to run our thing, we're going to divide the cost evenly and that's how everybody's going to pay for it. And so, they're probably wasting like two mo, you know, 20% on lost water.
We have to report our lost water and it can only be within a certain percentage of the mayhem do stuff, so.
That's all I have for financial report.
All right, discussion actions on, I want to vote on that. I'll make a motion, we approve financials as discussed. I'll make a motion, we approve financials as discussed. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Discussion action on invoices to behave. Where do we have a water man break?
I noticed that the format is a little different from last month, on the, for the payroll. We're getting a full account of how much we're paying this month, but we're not getting an itemization on this payroll register. Why, why did that change from last month?
We have two different ways we can run a report, Mary. The one that you see in your packet is the way we have ran them before we did the upgrade to Civic. It's easier for me to pluck the number out of this kind of report than the new report.
So we're not going to stick with the method that we had last month, we're going to go back to the old method of not listing them individually?
What do you want, what do you want to see, other than the detail you have in front of you, that's everything?
Well, it doesn't list all the people that are being paid by the village, and I think since it's a public record issue.
That's the last payroll, the detail is everyone who got paid on the last payroll, no one is missing.
Okay, so even if they don't get paid out, even if it's at zero, their name, if it's at zero, their, their name won't listen, it won't be listed?
That's correct, that's correct, yep.
The shoebox and the crosswalk, is that still an ongoing topic?
Done, is that right?
So.
I think we'll give a review.
Yeah. What is the O2 sensor from USA Blue? Just one of our four gas sensors, we have two of them for going to the stations and stuff. Yes, all those are, those are fine. Yep, yeah, the sensors, both sensors need to be replaced on either my can of gas, you know. Testing gas is not cheap either. Yeah, town gas is not, probably disposing of it, because it's a pressurized cylinder, yeah, it's a lot of fun. They actually, they made, there's a new four gas meter that has sensor, they fixed the O2 sensor problem where it burns out naturally every three years. And you can, it's, it's a little more on the upfront end, but you save a lot compared to buying, yeah, sensors every two years. Yeah, and that'd probably be something every few years, except the upgrade versus just replacing parts.
I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
I just have one more question about that also. There are some things on here that are listed, we're covering, we're doing the other one too, the payment approved report as well, right? So my.
I don't understand.
We're doing the payment approval report as well.
She's looking at them separately.
Yes, we're doing.
But yes, we're doing both, Mary.
Right, so I was waiting for the first one to be completed, so I just had a question about some of the. So we're, we're paying for pelletary shred service four times, under Visa State Bank of Cross Plains, it's $80 four times, it's $320 for October 21st.
Yeah, it's divided out over the four departments, it's one bill divided by four different areas.
So $320?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We only have them come in maybe once every three years.
Okay. And then I had another question, there's a $20 for a Macerbacker, why is that?
Where do you see that?
That was for the summer library program, that was one of the prizes.
Did you hear that? That was a prize for the summer library program, to the library.
Right, okay, there's that, I was just wondering why it was a, and then for 7742 for the going away lunch at PJ's Pizza, it, was that, how many pizzas was that?
Three pizzas, a thing of breakfast, and for the delivery driver for us.
I don't have a problem with that either. And then preschools. Hmm?
I said, do you have any more other than that?
Yep, preschool supplies, is that also for the library?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, those were my only questions.
All right, we got a motion on second, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Mary opposes, okay, it passes.
Can you ask her one, two, or three, does anyone else have any questions?
No, don't really care. Okay, reports, Vanguard Commission, we haven't met since our last meeting, we do have another meeting, I believe, on the 16th at 6:00 PM. All right, electrical, Sean, they're doing inventory, year-end inventory, and finishing up on projects to get them finished by the end of the year.
Yes, and one more thing I'm going to just add to that, is he and I are going to be meeting with Forest Engineering tomorrow morning, just to go over some final things of the contracts and that budget.
Yep, okay. Black Earth Fire District, Mary.
Yes, we have not met, but our meeting is set for this Thursday at 6:30, and then the meeting after that is set for a different time off of our usual schedule due to election, and that will be January 13th at 6:30.
Okay, thanks. Emergency management, Mary.
Dana Iowa.
Dana Iowa, sorry about that, Dana Iowa, James.
We met on October 21st, just approved bills, it was no discharge violations. We did approve Town and Country to do the facility report, so what that's going to mean for us is they're going to be coming here, Town and Country. Will come here for two meetings, so we need to get them information on what our plans are for the future, how much we plan on adding, that would go down to Dana Iowa. Kind of a bunch of different statistics they're going to need for what we think, how we're going to grow in the future, and how we plan to grow. And then they'll make up our 20-year report for Dana Iowa to get all their equipment and size that they'll need to do. So, in the future, we're going to have to come up with that, and maybe Public Works should, that should be on the agenda for Public Works to kind of go over a little bit.
And what is that, utilities? You say just go over the.
Just kind of go over what Dana Iowa's going to need for information and stuff.
I think that's a good plan.
And what is the, you said that Town and Country to, what is the name of those?
Town and Country's the one, Facility Report.
Thank you.
Our next meeting would be 18th at 6:30.
Okay, James. Mary, emergency management.
Yes, emergency management met several times since the last board meeting, and the last meeting, we went over, we needed to turn in right before. The paperwork was due to the county, and then they turned that into FEMA, and that's how they get funded, funding for the villages, towns, and cities in Dane County. And the last time we met was Tuesday, October 19th at 9:00 AM, and we completed the staply sheets, which is the format for completing that. And we had categories such as extreme flood, normal flood, tornado, snow and ice, extreme cold, this extreme heat, pandemic. And that will help for funding that we can realize that's more similar to how Mazo Mani was funded more and more quickly. They were funded pretty much immediately refunded, or funded rather, for projects that needed to occur following the flood. So we will bear the fruit of this as a village with having more funds received from FEMA following this format, and timely receipt of funds. And the next meeting, or does anybody have any questions?
No, just none other than a big hat tip to Tyler for all the work he put in on that.
Yes, he did, Tyler did the categories, it, he was a whiz at the airport, he said, and went through the paperwork. And he got himself in a zone, and he whipped through that stuff, so I think that the county is going to be very pleased with what we submitted. And we, as a group, decided putting things in redundantly, objectives and goals were very closely tied, and it was hard to discern. An objective from a goal and what they defined as the difference, so we ended up being redundant, because I think we all agreed, it's better to put it two times in two different places than miss it in one place where they might be looking for it. So if there's a learning curve with this, and maybe the feedback from that will be, we'll have some papers to follow the next time round when we do this, if they stick with the staply. Shelley found something from New York from, I think it was 2009 was the most current and the only one she could find following this format. So now, when everybody's using this, the next mitigation, people might have access to paperwork and how it was completed, and they can follow that format. So if I understand correctly, they're waiting for, Shelley, you can correct me, we're waiting to hear back from the county, and we'll have one more go at it, is that correct?
Now, right now, the village will be having a public hearing to review these draft mitigation strategies on Monday, November 8th. The county will also be having a public hearing for everyone they've received in the county coming up, I don't know if that date's been scheduled. And then sometime in December, after all these public hearings are held, the county will submit all of that paperwork.
All our people looked in.
Just a public hearing on Monday.
Right. Does anybody have any questions?
About 30, no.
So the next meeting then is the public hearing Monday, November 8th at 5:30.
Yeah.
And then I don't think that we set any future, we don't have a future date, is that correct, everyone that's on the EMS? Yes, so we'll just see each other on Monday, November 8th. Oh, and I have a question, though, will the agenda include then setting the next meeting at that public hearing, or is it just a public hearing with no discussion action?
Right now, it's just a public hearing.
Okay.
We'd have to open a bulletin though, so we could put on their next meeting date is.
Yeah.
We might want to do that, and then we don't have to convene independently of that, we could just do it at the same time. So, Josh, anyway, so that's that, any questions?
Eve, EMS committee, Brian Met.
Yes, we haven't met since September, we should be meeting November 11th at 6:00, I don't have my phone to confirm that at all.
Carrie, library board.
Okay, can you hear me? Sorry, flitting around with buttons here. We met on Tuesday, October 19th, did regular business items, we were give, or we did have a presentation from Mary Scott on her proposed. Is for the, what will be the vacated Black Earth Elementary School, so that was very interesting. We also discussed and took action on the budget, I don't want to steal all Bailey's thunder, we did approve gifts and donations policy and procedure, that's very helpful, that Bailey drafted. And we are working on her, Bailey's, the director's six-month evaluation, that is going to be compiled and done within the next month. And then talked about Thanksgiving closure that I'm sure Bailey will have in her report. So we meet next on Tuesday, or excuse me, November 16th. Any questions?
So, all of that was correct. So the board firmly approved the proposed budget, and it was a draft until our meeting on October 19th. We didn't quite approve the gifts and donations, mostly because I had to check into something with SBLF, so, but then.
I was so excited about that, I just considered it approved, sorry Bailey.
Yeah, yeah, it's nearly there, it's like it's knees away from being done. And we did hear the presentation about the elementary school for Mary Scott, and we also voted to have the library be closed for Thanksgiving weekend, as opposed to just Thanksgiving Day. So we'll be closed that Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, just to let our staff have some time with their families. And our next meeting is November 16th.
Thank you. Any questions?
Just out of curiosity, what are the gate counts or usage counts on a normal Thanksgiving weekend, I assume they're pretty low as is, yeah.
Yeah, so, we were closed last year, and obviously, I wasn't here until May. But according to pretty much every member of my staff, it's very dead on the Friday after Thanksgiving, so, and everybody usually wants to take it off anyway, so.
Yeah.
Yep.
I think that's good.
Smart, smart use of everything there, I'd say, yeah.
All right, Public Works, Scott.
Well, Public Works met on Monday, October 18th at 1:00. No public comment, the, Sean shared the following, that there's 27 new customers this year, 1,500 feet of prime buried along Highway 78. And they're on standby with the Wisconsin High School primary, it'll be installed before winter. NG&E and Vanguard are discussing some responsibilities near Farview, I guess there's some kind of turf battle going on there, that'll get, they'll have to work that out. We've been looking at the Black Earth signage, and I don't know if this got on for next meeting or not, did it?
Public Works?
Yeah.
No, I don't have a new draft yet.
You don't have a new draft yet, okay, so we'll leave it off this time. But it's coming along good, anybody that wants to see the current design, I know that we had a couple of different things that we, we changed at the last meeting, so. We'll bring that to the board when it gets all completed. Concrete, we got the, we got the shoebox completed, right, and Schumemberg has painted it. Shoebox area only at this time. We're still working, shoebox is a work in progress, that's what I just call it, just a work in progress. We put $1,800 into the 2011 Ford 550 for repairs, brakes, blower motor, sensor on exhaust. Permits are all in with the Parel ditch, all but one with the DNR, what's our status there?
I had a sit-down meeting with the Parel's, and it was a speakerphone with Nick.
Okay.
Explaining kind of the whole process, Parel's were getting a little upset on how long it's been delayed. Nick's kind of been the liaison with USDA, you know, all the different organizations, I think there's about six of them. And as of Monday, yesterday, we finally got our last permit completed, so while we trying to make some phone calls to contractors, good one. To hopefully get that work in progress and get that going. Parel's would prefer it done once the ground freezes, but yet the ditches still be open, just worry about compaction and stuff like that on field, field land soils and stuff, so. We're moving forward on that.
Okay, that's good to hear, that's, what a deal, we're cleaning out a debt. Campanity, a lot to. Um, mm, Caminiti lot discussion. We had a developer's agreement, plans from the owner. Um, we were talking about that. That's still work in progress as well. Um, I think I'm gonna let you take it, Matt, as far as when it comes to the position that's open and the application process, and pick out right there and if there's anything that I missed.
Um, I guess just as far as applications, um, I do have some, so we will discuss those at the Public Works meeting next Monday. Um, I've made some phone calls to previous employees, um, retired folk, just guys that have been in the municipal field or similar for, over the years, just as temps, in case we do run into a bind, wintertime, anytime, you know, since we're small staff.
I have a really good retired employee that can help you out.
I hear that. He's gonna get a phone call, so don't worry.
Please!
The streets are paved, so he'll have...
Uh, we don't have a street sweeper, so we're feeling the old times, so just...
I'm pretty gutsy over Zoom, but please.
Um, so aside from, yes, Public Works will be working through those applications. Um, as far as shoebox crosswalk, um, Scott did have it on. Crosswalk's done. Our portion is done. I've actually made some good progress with Jill at the shoebox. We did get them talked into, I believe, doing a sidewalk towards the front of their building. Um, they did move some parking stalls back to allow accommodate that sidewalk, so I think, I think we're gonna be good. I don't know if it'll happen this winter yet or this fall, or if it'll be a spring project, but actually, when we had the sidewalk crosswalk completed, people were always u- using it and just cutting across the grass, so I think they'll figure it out.
And I got a text from Steve that said, "Very nice, well-done job, guys."
Awesome. Good to hear. That's, keep that guy happy. Um... They're, they're gonna do a concrete sidewalk to their door instead of the gravel. I think I got them talked in the concrete versus granite, you know.
I think actually in the winter.
We changed some things, you gotta use your snow russia for, um, um, just handicap. Less we can gravel out of their entryway probably too. Um, leaf collection is starting to get full swing. That's pretty much starting to be a daily operation.
Well, last night you knocked them out.
Yeah, I mean, it was raining leaves today.
I took a walk around today and it got hit last night.
So, we'll be out and about with that as much as possible to get the piles and try to keep the gutters clean since we're lacking a street sweeper. Um, grass mowing, there's probably a couple left. It was going a lot in the past month or so. Compost has been just getting heavy with everyone cleaning yards and gardens and such like that. Uh, both of the Veterans Park, Community Park bathrooms are closed, winterized for the season. Um, railroad tracks, you all see that's started. Um, I did talk with the contractor trying to accommodate a little more sidewalk space if we could down by the crossing, and then we're actually going to piggyback off of their track warrants on track closure tomorrow at Center Street, trying to just alleviate a little bit of pooling puddling at that intersection with rainfall, trying to open up some ditches. So, we'll be working with that, bush dripping brush. Um, main break leak was on Remington. It was actually a joint leak, um, so something that kind of had been just one of our ongoing things that finally leaked long enough at surface. Um, so, that, that might be one of the issues towards our lost water that we've had, been battling lately and last year.
That joint leak over there?
Yep.
Could have been part of it?
Yep, yep. Um, the LRIP was done with Town and Country and myself, so that grant was applied for, and we had a garage door opener take out, fail, I guess we'll say, and so I got a new one ordered, hopefully coming in the next week or so. That's about it. Anybody got any?
Unless it's off the coast of California.
Yeah, it might be in a shipyard condition. Question about, um, the railroad closure?
Yep.
I noticed today, and I, I don't really care about noise and trucks. I know they gotta get someone, they gotta get from A to B.
Yep.
I just care about weights on a residential street with a semi truck, and I didn't know, did they adequately sign the 70, Highway 78 South?
Yeah, they've got everybody turned off up here at, uh, up IP. It's well-marked for the semi.
Yeah, so actually...
Come down S.
From across lanes?
Yeah.
Yeah, S, yeah. Going down JP is where they should go, okay.
Yeah.
Cause I saw two today, so.
Yep.
And those are, I guess they're not making a little, yeah, there's a note, few I noticed going through in that, um, our streets, I think, are okay for handling. We don't have any posted weight restrictions on our residential streets.
Some, they're not supposed to be going down Center Streets though. No, I saw a big one come out of Blue Mountains the other day. Hey!
Yeah, yeah.
He didn't know where he was.
I, I just, I know that...
I guess it'd be quite a few apartment in them need to sit there. Yep. Yep.
I know we don't have any weight restrictions necessarily stated, but, I mean, they have to be, they follow the yellow posted signs.
Yeah, we, we do have some restrictions because when we were dealing with Black Earth Meat, they were going around and you can't, they couldn't do that.
Right, but it's gonna be one, a week-long project. Um, yes, they are opening the tracks up tomorrow, so no trains until Thursday evening, hoping to have pavement down Friday afternoon, and paint Friday evening, opening Saturday. So, long-needed project. Oh, yeah.
Hopefully they don't put another speed bump in when they pave it again.
Well, that'll be nice on trains. Time to climb at 4:00 in the morning.
Yeah, the rail guy did tell me the track that is existing through here is from 1901.
Wow.
So, it's, I mean, obviously our rail is older through here than 1856, but it's some old outdated stuff. Um, once they do get the rail completed through here, five, seven years, trains will be 40 miles an hour.
Oh.
So, it'll be a long horn, but fast horn.
Are they, are there plans to update the crop teams themselves that they're trying to add to that?
Right, at 40, they have to put something, right?
Right, at, at this time, for what, right now or nothing, but I'm sure, yeah, at that point, they'll have to do something.
Alright, um, so we met October 18th, 6:00 PM. Um, we talked about the, the Legion Building, which we've already discussed this evening. Um, we still have some outstanding items for field days. Um, as far as I know, at least at this point, we're still waiting on a few itemized bills so that we can pay out to, um, some of our, um, our, uh, other organizations that helped us, for regulars, call them. Um, our, so other organizations that took part of it, so, um, so just kind of waiting on those, those itemized bills at this point. Um, we keep it on the agenda so that we don't forget it, so that we're sure people get their money. Um, we also talked about putting in a hydrant. Um, we're, we're still gonna have some more discussions on that. There was talk about putting it out here in the parking lot. Um, so we'll have to kind of work with how people are gonna park and how that will all work, um, but there's potential for that, so that's still ongoing, though no final decisions have been made on that one. Any questions in regards to that? Um, then talked briefly about the elementary school. Um, wasn't really too much to go on about that. Um, that's really about it for, we have some future items we're gonna talk about, but I don't think it's worth bringing up today. Any questions? Yeah, next meeting? Oh, next meeting, yeah. Um, the 15th at 6:00?
Yeah. I don't know if I mentioned the Public Works is next one.
Oh, yeah, I have it right there, yeah.
The B8.
I actually wrote that one down.
Got it.
Yep.
The one still?
Yeah.
Alright, any questions? Well, Police Committee, Scott.
Police Committee met on, uh, 15th of September, it's the last, our last meeting. Um, we just talked about drive gas off, or gas drive off, same thing. Um, they moved the, the 35 mile an hour zone down to 78 where it changes. I'm waiting on the report that'll be coming up at our next meeting. Um, we did not have a, a meeting in October. Um, AID was canceled, active shooter was canceled. Um, there was an armed robbery at the Mazo at the gas station. Um, other than that, uh, we cleaning out the basement. I don't know where that is, something that I can ask at the next meeting. I think it's come a long way. Has it come a long way?
Uh, nothing from Dane County, then, to use their stuff.
Okay.
Not that I'm aware of.
Alright.
Um, just about Sunday, some of the stuff that they did go through, but not everything, yeah.
Um, yeah, so they got as much as they could get ready to go at the, at that shred, so that was also, uh, taken care of then. Um, next meeting date will be November 17th, 5:15, and, uh, so I guess.
I heard it didn't meet, but do you know anything about the bathrooms? That's our bathroom.
Just they got messed up.
Yes.
Turning in your insurance, or, I mean, what do we need to fix?
I don't know.
Cartman has a certain end of insurance. Cartman has a person of interest that probably, that did it, I guess, so. Yeah, I don't, they're the family, and I just can't comment. I don't know enough about it, but... That should be brought up next, Police, alright? Find out. Right. See what's called, so. Well, actually, we could bring it up a public list if we need to get it turned in to the insurance company, if you could have something that you maybe... They can go after the parents of the kid, so.
Alright. Any questions for Scott? Any other business that may be brought before the board for future agendas?
So, I've got two items. Um, one, can we please schedule an Economic Development Committee meeting? It's been, I think we're going on eight months now, so that, do we need to vote on it?
No, but, uh, um, if it involves any funding or settings of the school, you shouldn't be involved in it.
I didn't say that it did. We haven't had an EDC committee meeting in, I think it's eight months, so I'm wondering if we're planning on having one anytime this year. Has nothing to do with the other.
Two chairs that nobody got. Oh, but I'm on it too, so, okay.
The second thing?
Second thing, Mary?
Did we vote on it, or is it going to appear on the agenda?
We have to vote on it. We're gonna set a date for it. It can be through the committee, and I'll set, I'll set it agenda.
Awesome, great. And then the next, um, I have a contact that's in line with what Tyler proposed with Habitat for Humanity, giving a short presentation. Um, I've been in contact with a man who is, um, the lead on an organization called Moving On, and they do apartment developments with 30% set aside for persons with disabilities. Um, the people that live in that, um, complex want to be assimilated into, um, other society. They want to work. They want to have experiences in volunteerism, and they're very dedicated to their community. His name is David Portefeu, and I would like that to be on the next agenda along with the Habitat for Humanity.
I'd rather do just one per meeting, so maybe the meeting after, but I, I, I don't want to put them together.
He said it's a 15-minute presentation at that.
Yeah, but there might be other, right now, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna commit to something until I see the agenda, because Habitat was already talking a half an hour, 20 minutes to a half an hour. So, uh, I, I think we, we hold on that for now, and then maybe the meeting after that.
Would you be okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, Mary?
Mm-hmm, I hear you.
So, January?
Yes, oh. Anything else? Meeting announcements? Next meeting is December 7th, 2021? And, next is agreement.
Thank you, Dan.
Aye.
Oh, hey, Carrie.
Beautiful, thank you, everybody.
Um, you gonna put on any new stuff?
Mm-hmm.
I think we have some tech, yeah.